Judging right now, I'm thinking about leaving.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission on September 25, 2007, to order. Probably should also have the Floral Park Neighborhood Association General Meeting at the same time, but we'll forego that at this point. Madam Secretary, can we have roll?
Commissioner Alderetti. Commissioner Becerra.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chairman McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everybody stand for the pledge allegiance? And Cynthia, will you lead us into the pledge allegiance?
As I have under my heart ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a part of our public comments right now, we are open for non-agenda items. So if you'd like to speak with regards to a non-agenda item for this evening, please come up here, fill out a card, and do so. If there's no one would like to do that at this point in time, then I'd like to introduce the interim city manager Cynthia Kurtz, and she's here this evening to talk to you about what's going on in the city and what's going on with planning. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, Chairman McLaughlin and commissioners. I see the audience you have and your agenda, you have a lot to do tonight, so I'll just take a few moments. When I started with Santa Ana in May as the interim city manager, a few commissioners from different commissions came to meet with me or called me, talked about things they were working on or needs that they had in the commission. And it dawned on me that it was really hard, given all of our advisory boards, to do this one by one, and so I ask if I might spend a few minutes while I was here with each of the bodies so that I can answer questions or get information, or you can tell me things about the Planning Commission and the work you're doing, then things that the city might be helpful in doing. I think, though, even more important than saying that to me, one of the things that we're implementing is, on an annual basis, at least on an annual basis, having the chair or a representative from your commission come and speak to the council. I went and spoke. I meet with council members, each of them, twice a month, and I ask them things they might like and tell them when things are coming to council, and just a way of keeping them apprised of where the different work is. And I start to talk to them about, you know, the commissions and how it works. I'm used to working for cities that have commissions, and they're a very, very important part of the decision-making process. And asking about Santa Ana, and I will tell you unanimously across the board, everyone was enthusiastic about the work the advisory boards, and of course, the Planning Commission probably works the hardest, do. But they did acknowledge that they're not always up to date with what you do. They see minutes from meetings, but that's not really a conversation. And one-on-one conversations is great, but it's not speaking to the body, to the whole of the council. And so we came up with this idea of starting to have these reports. We've had one already. It went really well with the Arts and Cultural Commission. It's right up front on the meeting, so you don't have to sit through the whole council meeting. And I'm hopeful that that's something you'll find valuable. I know that the council will find that valuable. I'm not going to try to give a state of the city or a lot of information about what's going on unless there are topics that you would like me to speak to. I'm really just here to meet you all, to see if there are things that I can help you with, and to thank you. I think you're scheduled now, I heard, tonight from the chair, to be in front of the council on October 18th.
Eighteenth, correct.
And so we'll start that process and see how it works, and maybe tweak it as it goes along if it needs to have some improvements, but it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you, Cynthia. Does anyone on the commission have a question for Cynthia at this time? Thank you.
Well, you know where to find me, so if something comes up while I'm still here, I'll be here at least through October and probably a little bit into November. Please feel free to be in touch, and otherwise, I look forward to seeing you again on October 18th.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. We'll move on to the consent calendar. The first item on the consent calendar, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on these items? Therefore, what I'd like to have at this point in time is a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the absence of Eric Alderetti.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We'll now move to the regular business calendar. Please be advised that the action of the Planning Commission is final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filled out with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning department within 10 days of the date that the commission's action, or unless set by public hearing by the city council. An appeal from a decision or requirement of the Planning Commission may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. First item on the public hearing, this is the time and place for public hearing, number, item number one, zoning ordinance amendment number 2017-03, to amend the existing specific development of a sixty, of number 60, to modify the allowable signage type in order to install a new 75-foot-tall, double-face, digital illumination pylon sign at the Santa Ana Auto Mall located at 1505 South Auto Mall Drive. Do any of the commissioners at this time have anything to disclose with regard to this item? With that, staff? Ivan?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you see on the screen before you is an application for zoning ordinance amendment number 2017-3, and this is for the existing Santa Ana Auto Mall. And I'll walk you through it. The project description itself is to amend the existing specific development number 60, so in this case, it's an application for a zoning ordinance amendment. And this is pertaining to the section that speaks about the electronic reader board or the electronic pylon sign permitted for the auto mall. This amendment is requested from the applicant in order to construct a 75-foot, brand-new, double-face, digital illuminated sign. If you'd like, I'd pause for a second.
If you can't, it's okay.
Okay. And then, it's not working. I'll continue. Basically, this is in order to construct a new 75-foot, double-face, full LED, digital pylon sign. And the project itself is to increase not only the height but the signable area by about 160 square feet, which at that height, it's not as noticeable as a ground unit or something of the sort. And the application, as I mentioned, requires approval of a zoning ordinance amendment. So this is the site location, is specifically the Honda dealership, which is adjacent to the 55 and the railway there. The zoning for it, as I mentioned, is specific development number 60, and is surrounded by adjacent auto dealerships, several of them belonging to the auto mall, industrial uses, and the city of Tustin, along with the Costa Mesa Freeway to the right or the east. And this is a current site photo, or the site photo of the current pylon sign that we have. The image itself doesn't really show much of the technology that's there, but this technology was really popular back in the 90s and a little bit outdated. This is a site plan. On the left, you'll see the parcels, and in the sign section of the auto mall for the ordinance, it specifies only the location of where it's going. It's only 10 feet north of the existing pylon sign location, so it won't change tremendously. And to the right, you'll see a small image in a color of the previous and the proposed sign. And these are the new sign elevations. These would be, just like I mentioned, 75 feet tall, which is only a five-foot difference to the existing, and then the signable area will only increase slightly by about 150 square feet. Little bit of the analysis for this application is that the proposed sign conforms to the conditions and provisions of Section 41-855, which talks about regional sign programs and large pylon signs. So it'll already be consistent with those requirements. The new sign will not be detrimental to persons residing or working in the area, as the vicinity is generally commercial and the auto mall. The new sign will help promote better business identification for the auto mall. It'll also help maintain that auto mall to be competitive with regional auto malls in other cities nearby. And then the proposed sign, the subject property and all the corresponding structures are also in compliance with all applicable development standards of the SD and also architectural guidelines in the SD. And with that, staff recommends that the city council approve zoning ordinance amendment 2017-3. This concludes my presentation. I also like to mention that we do have a representative from the dealership and the applicant as well to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the planning department?
I'm not sure if you're able to answer this question, but I read that this is going to allow revenue sharing, correct? Can you give me an example of how much revenue, or are you not allowed to discuss?
The details or the more specifics of the agreement are handled through CDA, which are processed but approved through city council. You won't see that tonight. It's a separate matter and approval by council. The section that talks about that is just to let you know that this is also part of an agreement for revenue sharing with the city.
And I have another question. In terms of the maximum height, I know you increased it according to what they were requesting, from 70 to 75. If we have somebody coming in requesting an 80-foot sign, are we going to have to increase the specific development just for them? Or do we have any signs in the city, I mean, any businesses that have already requested size that large?
So the proposed, well, the existing signs now that were constructed at the mall, the Westfield main place, are actually taller than this one, but those were approved in a different manner. This, because it is a specific development, needs to specify the maximum height. And what they requested was what we, was what we went with, with the exception of the signable area. They're only going about 1,120, but we made sure to increase that to 1,200 in case that something does happen.
And the last question I have, in regards to the dealership branding, it says proposed by amendment to SD number 60 to be deleted. What does that mean?
So that was the fourth subsection of that pylon sign, section that talked about branding or identification for individual dealerships on the pylon sign. And what that talks about is specific, maybe logos or the actual name brand being placed along the pylon sign. I'm not sure if you're aware of the, like, the Tom's Trucks sign off the Five and Grand. So what we deleted that is because we have now a brand-new, modern, modern industrial-type sign, and we want to make sure that that's kept as clean and slick and nice as possible, which also goes along the lines of the architectural guidelines for the SD. So by deleting that, you know, they have a brand-new, full LED, digital sign that they can take advantage to promote any and all dealerships.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions of the commission? Okay. Hearing no more questions. Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Thank you for having us here. My name is Jim Speck. I'm the owner of Volvo of Orange County in the Santa Ana Auto Mall. This is Rod Wilson. He is the sign builder and expert on these signs. He built this one, and he's built several in other cities for us. The present sign is a flat sign. It's just one-way, and it's a compromise for the viewing from either north or south on the freeway. The new sign will be shaped like this, so it will be directly into the, the people going south can see it right on, and the people going north can see it right on, which is actually a better safety item. As far as the height goes, we wouldn't want to go any far higher than what we're talking about, because you can actually get too high, and it loses its effectiveness. But this is part of renovation we're doing in the auto mall to the, to probably about $30 million. My store, we're spending about $4 million to do a renovation right now, and it's a requirement of the manufacturer. They have their identity, the way they want the building to look, and if we don't do it, we will lose allocation of cars. And of course, we make our money by selling cars, and we raise money for the city and the county and the state by selling cars. As far as myself, I'm 74 years old. I really don't need to sell more cars to change my lifestyle, but I love what I do. And I can only play golf so many days a week with this old body. And having spent 58 years with the same woman, to spend seven days a week, 24 hours a day with her, one of us would be in jail for murder. So I have to work. But Roger Penske's making a major investment. His total investment in the auto mall is probably close to $300 million with what he's done over the last seven or eight years. The Honda store, same thing, about $4 or $5 million. We're building, Roger Penske's building a new Lincoln store there. He just put in Subaru. And when my building is complete, hopefully by the end of the year, it will be the mini store, which is about five years old, will be the oldest facility in the auto mall. It is by far, by far, the best-looking auto mall in California. And I don't say that because we're there. It really is, if you ever look around. So with that, Rod, do you have anything to add? If you have any, I'm Rod Wilson, the owner of EMI. We built your original sign at the auto mall, and if you have any questions on the technical side, the sign will operate according to Caltrans regulations. There won't be any motion or animation. It has to operate according to static messages for six seconds, and then it changes to the next message without any flashing or animations.
Cynthia.
Hello. Excuse me. My question is, will the advertisement on there and the announcements always only be about the auto mall, the different vendors there, or are you going to sell?
It's about the auto mall and the products and services in the Santa Ana Auto Mall, and also public service messages for the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's somewhat a question for also administration, but because it's not in a residential area, are we not concerned about the time that the flashing signs are going to be on? Or do we have a specific time that you'll turn it off? Or are we always going to be on?
We typically turn the signs off at 12:00 midnight and then turn them back on at 5:00 AM. And they automatically dim at dusk, and then turn off at midnight, and then in the morning, they come back on. And they'll be, if it's during the fall or winter, in the morning at 5:00 AM, they'll come on in a dim mode until the sun comes up, and then it actually follows the sun. So there's a photocell that tracks it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Rod, Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And those were our two speaker cards at this point in time. We'll take any other comments from the public at this moment. If you would, please fill out a speaker card. Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. I'd like to have him. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank folks over at the auto mall for investing in the auto mall here in the city, and it is a pretty darn good-looking facility, so I appreciate the work that you guys do. On that note, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that this commission recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment number 2017-03 to revise SD number 60 in the municipal code.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Nguyen, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero. One absent, Eric Alderetti. Move on to item number two. And what I'd like to start out with right now, just to make sure everything is very clear, we have a lot of speakers for this evening. So what I'd like to make sure everybody understands, we have three minutes, and three minutes only, and I will cut you off, because I want to make sure that everybody gets to say what they want to say, and we probably have close to 40 cards to review tonight. So with that said, I'd like to, this is the time and place for public hearing number two, appeal number 2017-2, dash 02, of minor exception, number 2017-01, to exceed fence height standards for a single-family resident located at 1904 North Healy Trope Drive. Does any of the commissioners at this time have anything to disclose? No? Okay. I am going to disclose the following. I've reviewed this with city legal counsel. First of all, I was in the kitchen with a neighbor of mine, and Mr. Ness was finishing up a discussion about the wall. I did not participate in the conversation. I was introduced to him, and that was it. And about two minutes later, Mike left. I've been in Floral Park for 25 years. I've been president of the Neighborhood Association. I'm part of the Floral Park Neighborhood Committee for the state and national historic designation, and have helped to create awareness on historic registry and the benefits of being historic registry and following up with the opportunities of the Mills Act. I've also served on the HRC, which is the Historic Resources Commission, before being a planning commissioner. A number of the individuals in the city have been contacted, have contacted me in the recent months to discuss this, but I have not, I've listened to them, but I haven't said or made any certain determination of what we're talking about this evening. I am a member of the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Council, on which Bill Urkey from Rattan and Tucker is a member of the board and also a member of the Government Affairs Council, and he's also a neighbor in Floral Park. That's my disclosure. I want to make sure that that's clear, and I am not, I'm going to be part of the judgment process. Thank you. With that said, would staff go ahead with the presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. The item before you is an appeal application for a fence approval at 1904 Healy Trope. Give you some quick history of the project here. Specifically, back in May, there's only the administrator approved a request by Mr. Mike Ness to install a five-foot fence around his property, and the applicant here, or the appellant, filed an appeal on that challenging that decision. What the minor exception did was it allowed the construction of a five-foot wall, again, along both 19th Street and Healy Trope. The wall is going to be decorative to be compatible with the residence. It's going to be set back four feet from the sidewalk to allow a little buffer from the public walking along it. Then it's going to have landscaping in front of it to help soften the edge of it. That essentially was what was approved by the zoning administrator. Here's an aerial map of the property here. You can see that right there on the northwest corner of 19th and Healy Trope. See the building, the house, and the garage is set back off of Healy Trope and off of 19th Street. Here is a photo looking northwest at the property there from the corner. You can see the house there. It is listed on historic registers, known as the Elliot House, and it's a landmark Here's a site plan there that shows you where the fence, that dark black line there shows you where the fence is going to be. You can see it kind of curves around the corner area there, and it goes up north along Healy Trope and along the northern property line. And here is a side-by-side, so you get a better idea. You can kind of see where the fence is going to go, or the wall's going to go. And then you can see it's going to go around that palm tree, that big mature palm tree, and it'll still be outside, exposed to the public. And here is a rendering of the wall there, and you also have that in your packet. And I believe the applicant has some rendering to show you as well here later on in his presentation, and you can kind of see a little better representation of what the wall will look like. So let's talk about zoning administrator actions. Back in May, there were two hearings held in May, and both those two meetings, May 10th and May 17th, extensive community input, received an extensive amount of public comments at the meetings, as well as numerous emails, again, which are all in your packet, the emails there. And after hearing the testimony on May 10th, the zoning administrator continued the item for a week in order to give him time to make a determination and put together his finding of facts and his resolution. And he found that there was some special circumstances to the property that warranted approval of the fence. And this whole packet there, just two documents, it was three in four in your packet, I'm not going to go over them in detail, but basically what he said were a few things there. That the corner location limits the use of his yard. The features and style of the house are going to be compatible with the wall of the greater height, whereas the code allows a three-foot-high wall, he found that a taller wall would be more compatible and more consistent with the design of the house. The improvements in the use of the property, such as this wall, are going to respect the heritage of this significantly historic structure. So, oof. So he found that the wall would be compatible with that Italianate design of the house, what they're proposing. And again, the render is going to show you the design and what the wall's going to look like. The wall be consistent with our design guidelines. Allow on this wall would allow the owner the ability to have a safe and secure use of his outdoor space, since the house and the garage is pushed so far back, he has limited backyard space, so his front yard space would essentially be his private open space. And my fence set off has the ability now to enjoy his yard. And then finally, the edge landscaping will help soften the wall and maintain that residential feel of the property. So those are some of the findings that the zoning administrator made in his documents. And again, they're exhibits, I believe, three and four in your staff report. A week later, the Gallivants filed an appeal, the application there, and they found that they had, there's some reasoning behind their appeal, and some of them are listed here. You received an email of their appeal application, but some of the items that were listed in their appeal application include their property, which is directly north of theirs, will be boxed in, five-foot fence on their southern perimeter, there's a six-foot-high fence on the northern side, it was approved in exception back in the 80s. So what would happen is that two taller fences and walls on their property would essentially box them in in this really tight feel. Lose the visibility from their driveway. As they're backing out in their driveway, they throw out that five-foot-high fence could impact the visibility as they're backing out and could create some kind of safety condition. The wall, per code, is not incompatible. They thought a three-foot wall is perfectly compatible with the style and design of the fence. The property, being a landmark property, has a Mills Act, and part of the appeal is that the Mills Act could be in jeopardy, because now we're impacting the view quarters in the property, which is something that's more of the review and determination, a purview of the historic commission, not the planning commission. But that was raised as an issue of the Mills Act implications. And then precedent setting, by allowing a wall here to go up in this area, could be, could lead to more walls of similar nature in the neighborhood. And then finally, there were some other residents that applied in the past, and they didn't get their wall approved, and that would impacted them. So some of the issues are raised by the appeal application. So after the hearing, the zoning administrator recommended approval of the fence, of the wall, and the recommendation before you this evening is to affirm the zoning administrator's determination to approve the minor exception and adopt the resolution denying the appeal application. That concludes my presentation. Lisa and I are here to answer any questions.
Does the commission have any questions of staff?
I do.
Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question about, I don't know if you have the right number, but I want to be fair with the residents of Floral Park, but when I was reading the report, it says that some of the residents were denied relief. Do you have an approximate number of how many people have submitted a similar request of building a wall bigger than what Mr. Ness is requiring?
In this neighborhood right here, Floral Park?
Yes.
We can run a report as far back as 2001. Our statement database came into effect. Before then, we have no records. We'd have to go back and dig through files. I have five applications that were applied for from 2000 on to today. Two were denied, two were withdrawn, and one is before you this evening.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none. Would the Gallivants?
Would the Gallavans like to speak at this time on the item?
Yes. I guess so. I was not going to be the first speaker, but I'm happy to. My husband, I'm speaking for the two of us tonight. And thank you for sitting on the commission. I know it's a lot of work. We, my name is Nancy Gallivan. My husband is Dr. William Gallivan. We've lived in our house, right next to the property in question, for fifty-two years. It may be longer than some of you have lived. I'm not sure. Anyway, we raised our seven children there. And we're now enjoying twenty-five grandchildren who also love to play in our open front yard. We don't have much time left. We're old. Let's face it. We all are going to die. I know that's a bad word. But because we've been there so long, we feel that we want to leave the legacy to our neighborhood of enjoying what we have been able to enjoy. The young families should have the open feeling and the ability to look up and down the street and know their neighbors that we've had. We want them to have the same experience of living in downtown, old town, USA. That's what Floral Park is all about. That's why people come to our neighborhood. It's, they could live in a gated community. They could live in Newport. But suddenly, it's amazing. I meet a lot of people that say, "Oh, we moved from Newport. We didn't like it." "We moved from the hills. They didn't have sidewalks." "We didn't know our neighbors. We lived in a gated community." They come to Floral Park. We'll be dead, but the wall will remain. Once a wall is built around a property, nobody ever takes it down. We'll be gone. Our current owners will be gone, but two decades from now, that wall is still going to be there. The Elliotts still live there. The name of the house is the Elliott House. When we moved in, we got to know Alberta and Art. They loved their open vistas, and Alberta's flowers along the balustrades were her pride and joy. They went to, well, Art died, and Alberta moved on. And the next family that moved in were Clark and Pat Paddock. They had three children and a large Labrador. They didn't need a wall. They didn't need a fence or anything else to confine them. They played in their front yard. Clark would throw the ball all the way from Nineteenth Street up to our wall on the north side. And the wall, the dog would chase it, but always stopped before he hit our flower beds. I want you to know, and I'm sure you realize as a planning commission, that architectural drawings are very idealized. I've never yet, in my long experience, seen one that turns out to look exactly like this fairy tale beautiful thing that someone has conceived of. We have examples of that with the wall to the north of us. The wall is lovely, but the subsequent owners and the people before them have let the landscaping grow so overgrown that you cannot, you can look on your pictures there, of the pictures of, it used to be called the Flure House. You cannot see it from any point on the street or even walking by. It's a beautiful house. I used to garden with Mr. Flure when he was there. Now, the lawyers are probably going to talk about property rights. And how Mr. Ness has the property and Mrs. Ness have these rights to use their property as they want. Well, how about our property rights? You know, we're going to be boxed in. Who's going to want to buy a house sitting between two walls? And you might consider the fact that probably the next owners will say, geez, I better put a wall of mine on my property. And then there'll be a solid wall from Nineteenth Street for five hundred feet on the north side, on the south side of Santa Ana, of Heliotrope Drive. That's a long thing. That's two, three, four, five, six lots.
We need to wrap up if we can.
A long way.
I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, we've enjoyed it. I had a lot more points. I didn't realize I was going to be so limited in time. We would like to see the family life going on about us. As we see the young families growing up, we don't want to be confined in a wall, and we don't want them to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
We were supposed to show you this photo. I'm sorry. This is the view of our house and the neighbor's house, all open and lovely.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication? Okay. We will now open to the...
You did receive all the emails in your packet, so you...
Do we want to, okay. Do we have that identified in the...
You don't need to, since she's got it in the packet.
So, sorry, in the packet, okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to reference that we did receive those.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. We will now move on to the public hearing. And as I said, we'll go with three minutes at a time. We are going to start out with Mike Ness. So...
Good evening, everybody. This is my fourth home I've owned in this neighborhood. We raised our kids in the two thousands on Ross Street. Our yard was open. The neighbor's yard was open. The neighbor's yard was open. It was great. Throw the football, play with the kids. Our kids are grown now, and our needs are a little different. When this house came for sale twelve years ago, we couldn't afford it. And, and for some reason, it came up for sale. And we just said, oh, let's go have a look-ski, you know? And it doesn't hurt to have a look. And we fell in love with the house. Every house we've owned in the neighborhood, we've restored. We've planted trees. We've done everything we could to keep the property value up. This house in particular, because it's a 1931 vintage, you know, Italianate. There's Gothic aspects to it. There's Spanish aspects to it. There's Moorish details. We spent two years restoring the interior with a designer from Pasadena who specializes in historic properties. The only thing about this house when I bought it was it felt a little exposed when you were in the front yard, exposed to the heavy traffic on Nineteenth. And as much as I love associating with neighbors, I like to do it when I choose to. And not because I'm out there gardening, and someone's walking by with their dog, and we have to establish eye contact, and we have to talk. Or, or every car driving down Nineteenth, you know, you feel a little bit on display because of the elevation of the house. It's elevated approximately three feet off the ground because of the concrete porch foundation that it sits on. I believe that a three-foot wall works great for a single-story house. I, I, we've spent about a year or more...
Can we finish up, Mike?
Yeah. About a year designing this wall to make it look like it was built when the house was built. And we're asking for two feet. I'll just say this, at five feet high, you still see ninety-five percent of the house. So...
Can we finish up?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is Doug Smith.
First, let me thank you for your time tonight. I am here on behalf of Rick Kagasoff, a neighbor on the same street. Rick's lived in his house for over nine years. He went through a rebuild approximately three years ago, and he knows the trials and tribulations of building anything in this neighborhood. He thinks it's unfair for the appellant to proceed to appeal at this point in time because it's impacting on the fair use of Mr. Ness and his real property. I appreciate the time that you're taking, but the appellant's statements with regards to their use of the property completely ignore Mr. Ness's use of his property. And he's spent thousands of dollars improving that property, and the city benefits by that. I hope you follow the recommendation of your planner and that you deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Herbert Silva.
Hello. I'm a neighbor of Mike's. I live adjacent to the property on the east west property line. I've lived in the neighborhood twenty-four years. And I'm encouraging you to approve his variance. I find nothing wrong with him doing that. Everyone's entitled to their privacy and their security. The, I've seen the plans, and they're, the quality of the work that he's done on the property inside, I've seen. He's committed to that. He's done the same with other properties in the neighborhood. And I have every confidence that he'll do a successful job at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Reuben. Reuben Rea.
Good evening. My name is Reuben Rea, and I know Mr. Ness from, he used to own the house on the corner of Nineteenth and Ross. I live in 2004 North Ross. And I'm in favor of him building that fence. Mike is being an asset to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Nelsick, Nelsick? Sorry. All right, move on.
Esteemed members of the planning commission and concerned citizens. I'm Rhonda Nelsick, and I reside, and I'm a property owner at nineteen oh one North Flower Street in Santa Ana. I've lived in Floral Park for thirty years. And my next-door neighbor is Mike Ness. I am speaking in favor of the variance for the height of the fence that he is proposing to build, as well as the subsequent landscaping. I've seen the plans for this construction, and the landscaping, as well as the vintage wrought iron gate that he is planning to put in at the front entrance. I can only say that I feel that the plans are in keeping with the architectural integrity of both the house, the property, and the neighborhood, and its historic nature. I feel also that the height that he is asking for is in accordance with the size and the design of the house and the property. And the curvilinear design of the front gate location, as well as the setback of the fence from the sidewalk, will definitely allow views of the house and the property, as well as an unimpeded view of the intersection at Nineteenth and Heliotrope, which is a concern that some have raised. I've lived next to the previous owners, Mrs. Elliott, as well as the Paddocks, and I have seen the interior of their home when they lived there. And I can only say that I have seen the interior of the restoration of what Mr. and Mrs. Ness have accomplished in their house. It's stunning. I wish every house in our neighborhood took the time and the attention to detail and historical accuracy that they have gone to on the inside of the house. And I know that the outside of the house will be a match because that is the plans that I have seen, and that is the nature of what they want for a home. Lastly, I live on a high-profile corner, so I know what the traffic, both vehicle and pedestrian, is like. And I understand and empathize with the concern they have for privacy. You can see many examples of walls and fences in our neighborhood that are hopefully wanting the same privacy.
Can you finish up, Rhonda?
And I think that a property owner should be entitled to that same security. So I urge you to approve of his appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rhonda. The next is, the next is Maureen Bricken.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mrs. Gallivan spoke to me a week ago Sunday about this problem. So I did what my husband would have done, because he was on the planning commission here for ten years. When he received his packet, he drove out to each applicant to take a personal view of it. I went over there, and I saw a very well-kept neighborhood and a very open neighborhood. And I believe this wall would definitely blight that portion of the area. And I would strongly urge you to support the Gallavans in this decline and not permit this solid prison-like wall around their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Ken Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Ken Schmidt. I am actually a neighbor of Mike Ness as well. We share the same property line. I am here to support Mike in building that wall around his property. Like Rhonda and Herbert said, if anybody in here has seen the inside of Mike's house and the work that he's done over the last two years that he's owned the property, it's absolutely magnificent. And I would expect the same with the details of the wall and what he plans to do. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Blair O'Callahan.
Blair O'Callahan, live at 321 East Santa Clara. I had the privilege of being a neighbor of Mike's when we lived on Ross. And we, I'm just thankful that somebody like him decided to move back and buy that house. Though, one thing, I don't consider building a wall a problem. Technically, that's one side of that property. They could build a wall six or seven feet tall without a permit. So I think what Mike's come up with here is a great compromise to protect that property and allow everybody to enjoy it. I think it's kind of a perfect solution. So I would suggest you deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Blair. David Nissen.
Good evening, planning commission. Thanks for taking so much time to hear all of our neighbors. As is typical of Floral Park, people that live there love it. We used to live on Ross Street, and we were neighbors with Mr. Ness. We lived on the corner of Ross Street. And we decided that we found a house in Heliotrope that we liked, so we moved over to Heliotrope. And here we are again with neighbors with Mr. Ness on the same street in Heliotrope. I believe the wall would be very attractive. Any, any structure that is made to look like it was built with the original house could not be a blight. It can only be an enhancement to the neighborhood. I don't believe the concerns about visibility are legitimate with a four-foot setback from the sidewalk and a five-foot wall. I know the Gallavans' house, I see it all the time. Their car would be not even into the street yet with complete visibility down the sidewalk and sideline before they could back out. I, I realize, and, you know, this hasn't been brought up, and maybe it's not appropriate, but I understand that the, you know, we have a lot of sympathy and compassion for our homeless community. Obviously, you can see a stone's throw over here. We have a camp out at the plaza. You know, we let homeless people stay here because we, the bus station. Yesterday, on Heliotrope, I live at 2013 North Heliotrope, just up from the Ness property, there was a homeless person going through our trash cans. And I had to yell at him and say, please don't do that. He ignored me about three times. I finally threatened to... I finally threatened to call the police. My nine-year-old son ended up crying. It's just the state of the times. Maybe back in the day, this was not a problem. But I'm sure it wasn't a problem many years ago when you lived there. I understand why someone needs some security and protection, especially in such a busy intersection there. If it's done tastefully, like the Nesses have planned, my wife and Elisa completely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Karen O'Callahan. Sorry. Should have figured we could put that Blair.
Hi. Thank you so much. I'm here to offer my support for the Nesses to build their wall. I want to reiterate everything that Rhonda had so eloquently said. I couldn't agree more. She touched on all the high points that I wanted to bring up. The only thing I'd want to add is that I've lived in this Floral Park neighborhood for almost 30 years. I love it. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I've known the Nesses for 20 of those years. I used to live across the street from them. Our kids grew up together, played together. We talk about an open, loving neighborhood. They are the epitome of that. I've seen their other homes that they've owned, both in Floral Park, outside of Floral Park. Every home has been done so tastefully. This is the first home that they're requesting to build a five-foot wall. This isn't their typical mode. That house, for the reasons that Mike stated and others have stated, they feel the necessity to do that, and I fully support it. I also feel, they're entitled to build a three-foot wall, which I think would actually look quite silly for such a grand home. I would, for 85% of the homes in Floral Park, be against a five-foot wall. There's just a few that have such grand scale and that would support that, that is in keeping with the whole look and feel of the house. Again, they've spent so much money, they have such attention to detail. I have no doubt, and I was thrilled, as Blair had said, when I found out that they bought one of my favorite homes in the neighborhood. I have complete faith that it will be a fantastic, fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Joe Duffy.
My name is Joe Duffy, and I've been a resident of Floral Park for 27 years, raised a family there. I also own a historic building in downtown at Broadway and Fourth Street, which is the Phillips Block Building. I am a big proponent of period correct restoration and preservation. At this point, it's kind of a cringe when I hear the word "wall." In this political climate, that's not necessarily a really cool word. And I don't look at it like that. I look at it like an architectural enhancement. It's not a wall. I mean, it's part of the architecture. It really enhances the property, enhances that corner tremendously. So I can't refer to it as a wall. So I'm here to support the project, and I hope that you all support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Ellen Callaway.
Hello. I'm Mrs. Ellen Callaway from North Heliotrope Drive, and with a small band of residents from Santa Ana, I'm here to support the appeal and to oppose the construction of the five-foot wall around the home at 1904 North Heliotrope Drive. I regret speaking in opposition to my neighbor's plans for his new home. I welcome you to North Heliotrope Drive. I hope that you love Heliotrope Drive the same way I have. But I am asking the members of the Commission to review the findings and reject the resolution of the contract zoning administrator, because they seem to unfairly benefit one family, and they could unnecessarily harm others. I am troubled by the decision of the Planning Commission to retain a contract attorney from an outside law firm with no seeming understanding of Santa Ana, and then to unquestioningly accept its findings. So to assist you in reviewing the findings and resolution of the contract administrator. Former City Councilor Alberta Christie, one of the authors of the 2004 zoning ordinance, will discuss why it's essential for the city to equally and strictly enforce it. Mr. Ed Marashi will discuss the impropriety of a high wall surrounding this landmark billing at 1904 North Heliotrope. Mr. Lazlo Brio will talk about the factual errors and omissions that undermine the reliability of the contract zoning administrator's report. Mr. Jeffrey Katz will talk about how the application fails to fulfill the criteria for awarding an exception to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Ed Tornell, the grave implications of granting this exception with the rationale proposed by the zoning administrator. Mrs. Angel Barnes, the appearance of unfair bias and preferential treatment in the city's processing of the current application. Mr. Gene Andres, the potential damage to the unique character of the historic Floral Park neighborhood. Mr. Richard Way, an architect, the architectural significance of the historic Elliott home. Mr. Eric Stein, a branding expert, the impact on the unique reputation and brand of Floral Park in the city. Mr. Kevin Schuler and Dr. Amin Garces will discuss their concerns as neighbors. Mrs. Bob McKeon from Wilshire Square and Ms. Debbie McKeon from French Park, on the potential negative impact of this resolution throughout the city. I respectfully request the members of this Commission, consider the information provided you tonight, independently review the findings of the zoning administrator. Please grant the appeal by the Gallivans to the zoning administrator's findings and deny the exception to the five-foot wall.
Thank you, Ellen. Alberta Christie.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman and Commissioners. 1998, Councilwoman Lisa Bis and I ran on a platform of cleaning up the image of Santa Ana. When we got elected, we formed the NICE Committee, Neighborhood Improvement Code Enforcement. And one of the things we did because of the community, we had staff, some of them are here today, and the Neighborhood Association to take an inventory of all the fences in Santa Ana. Ugly, horrible, deplorable is what we find, because there was no ordinance to regulate the fences. What materials, the landscaping, unbelievable that was there, okay? We worked not only with staff, 58 neighborhood associations, that's how many we had at that time, and all of them came in and said, yes, we support the ordinance, because it would be equally applied throughout the entire city, so that no matter who came up for that, where they lived, or how important they're supposed to be, if you came to that counter in the Planning Commission, it was three feet. All of my neighbors, Lisa had downtown area, I have southwest, come there, and what did they were told? Three feet, right off the bat. They didn't like it, but you know what? They complied with it. And I want to leave you with this, because you are Commissioners appointed by elected officials. When you, as a city, the highest and best practice that you can give to any city is to equally apply any laws, ordinance, or code, equally, not selectively. If you approve this with the zoning administration, it's not Floral Park that's going to be impacted. All of the city will be impacted because of the fact that, once again, you do not have an ordinance that will regulate the height. You'll have people from north, south, east, and west coming in and wanting a five-foot wall. Let's do not go back. So I am urging you to approve the appeal and go against the zoning administration from all the residents and neighborhood units in Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, Alberta. Ed Marashi.
Hello, Commissioners and staff. My name is Ed Marashi, and I reside at 2139 North Flower Street, Santa Ana. I'm here speaking as a Santa Ana resident on why the wall should not be allowed from a historic and Mills Act point of view. This is a subject I'm familiar with, since I'm both a Santa Ana Historic Resource Commissioner and a homeowner with a home on the historic registry and have the Mills Act. The city of Santa Ana takes historical preservation serious by the way of the Historical Commission and the municipal code, Section 30, which is all just dedicated to historical preservation. So is Floral Park, with our bid to try to get the national historic designation for the whole neighborhood, and also by all the film crews that come in and film in our neighborhood because of the historic homes we have. How many of them would want to come in and film a wall? The Elliott House was granted Landmark status when it was placed on the Historical Register in 2003. Landmark is the highest designation and qualifies under Criteria 1 for exemplification of distinguishing characteristics of Italian Renaissance style. In 2010, the property was placed on the Mills Act, which is a tax savings incentive program for owners to maintain its character in exchange for tax savings, property tax savings. I believe allowing the five-foot wall would violate the Mills Act contract, because it states, and I quote, "The city and the property owner, for their mutual benefit, now desires to enter into this agreement, which defines and limits the use and altercation of the historic property, in order to enhance and maintain its value as a cultural and historic resource for the owner and the community." The key words here are "limit" and "enhance." A person who takes on the responsibility of the Mills Act property is limiting their rights to change the property in exchange for the reduced property taxes. It's also important to justify that putting up a five-foot wall, which blocks the view of one-third to two-thirds of the house, enhances the historical property. That'd be hard to prove. When it comes to blocking the view, the Mills Act Agreement states, and I quote again, "A view corridor enabling the general public to see the historical property from the public right-of-way shall be maintained, and owners shall not be permitted to block the view corridor to the property with any new structures, such as walls, fences, or shrubbery, so as to prevent the viewing of the historic landmark by the public." The Historic Register record, written by the city, states all original exterior features of the Elliott House are considered character-defining and should be preserved, including but not limited to materials, finishes, windows, doors, architectural details such as arches and columns, and the palm trees and the concrete paths. It's these features that will be blocked by the five-foot wall, and permitting this wall, the city of Santa Ana will be breaching the Mills Act contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Lazlo.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lazlo Brio. I've got some answers. So what I did was, I took a look at the zoning administrator's report, because that's basically the foundation of where it started this whole thing.
Go closer to Mike. You're not hearing him.
I did take a look at the report, and the zoning administrator's report that led to the approval of this minor exception, and it's the foundation for everything. I looked at the arguments behind it. I'm just going to go through a couple of the very important ones, and just share with you what I found was left out or was inaccurate. If we look at Slide 3, the argument that was stated within that report is the backyard is too small. Well, I looked at the exhibit site plan, looking for what's the backyard portion of it, and it's pretty easy to calculate what it is. It's not hard to do it. I came up with 3,000 square feet. So 3,000 square feet for a backyard is too small. But I'm guessing there's a lot of neighborhoods within Floral Park that have a backyard that's smaller than 3,000 feet. Also, the garages in Floral Park, that was mentioned, they're predominantly in the rear there by reducing usable backyard space, so that's not really an argument. Now, if we look at Slide 4, and take a look at what the privacy yard is going to look like, once we put these walls up, that's 6,200 square feet. You add that to the 3,000, this property is going to have 9,200 square feet of basically privacy yard. Now, what other yard within Floral Park are we going to grant that to? Less than 2% of the houses in Floral Park, I believe, have privacy walls that are along these lines, and those were grandfathered before these rules were put into place. Now, moving over to Slide 7, 6. There's been a lot of talk, or at least within that document, it was mentioned numerous times that the view is not going to be obstructed. So I said, okay, well, if somebody's walking down 19th Street, and right to the left of them is a five-foot wall, what are they going to be able to see, or how high do you have to be to be able to see the full house? I understand that the balustrades are three feet off the ground, so that's what I took as a reference point. When can you see the bottom of that balustrade? And I found that you'd have to be 5'10", if you're in the middle of the crosswalk, to be able to see the bottom of the balustrade. So, okay, so the next question is, well, in terms of the general population, what percentage of the women are about 5'10" tall? And if you look it up online, that's right around 2%. So then I said, okay, well, look up, what about in terms of men? So that's right around 41%. So bottom line is, a majority of the people are not going to be able to see the full, unobstructed view of that house. And for that reason, I think this should be really reconsidered, and the appeal should be granted, and this should not be allowed to move forward.
Thank you, Lazlo.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Katz.
I'm a 29-year attorney, but I also happen to live across the street from Mr. Ness and where this wall will go up. What I will speak to you about tonight is one thing nobody else has spoken to you about, and what is the law? Because the zoning administrator abused his discretion and failed to follow the law. And let me lay this out, so we have clarity about what the law is, because I appreciate what my neighbors have said, and what they feel about what Mr. Ness has done and will do, but it's the law that governs what has to be done here. There is a three-foot ordinance, 41-638 establishes when you can get a variance. Roman 1 says, "In order to do it, there must be a deprivation of a privilege." The zoning administrator found there was a privilege that was being deprived. He has a right to enjoy his front yard in private. That is not true. We have a zoning ordinance, which limits walls to three feet. And let's understand what an ordinance is, and I'm reading to you from Topanga Canyon case. This is our Supreme Court. Justice Toblerone says the following. Courts must meaningfully review grants of variances in order to protect the interests of those who hold rights in property nearby the parcel for which a variance is sought. After all, a zoning scheme is similar in some respects to a contract. Listen to this. Each party forgoes rights to use its land as it wishes in return for the assurance that the use of the neighboring property will be similarly restricted, the rationale being that such mutual restriction can enhance total community welfare. If the interests of these parties in preventing unjustified variance awards for neighboring land is not sufficiently protected, the consequence will be subversion of the critical reciprocity upon which zoning regulation rests. He has a right to privacy in his house, he has a right to privacy in his backyard, but that zoning ordinance, which limits walls to three feet, says we all have given up our right to privacy in our front yards for the benefit of the community. Next, Roman 2 requires there to be special circumstances in order for us to grant a variance. The zoning administrator identified a number of those, but what he forgot to look at was the law, which says a zoning variance must be grounded in conditions peculiar to the particular lot, as distinguished from other properties in the area. So let's knock them down, one by one, what he focused on. The placement of the lot is unique because it's set back. Every house on Heliotrope is set back. I put exhibit in my legal brief that I've given to you, which shows that the Gallivans' house is further back than the Ness property. Two-car garages in the backyards, eliminating his...
Jeffrey, can we wrap up?
Okay. Let me wrap it with two quick points. One, the ordinance also requires that there be a natural condition which inhibits your privilege. The law on this is clear as well. Self-imposed burdens cannot legally justify the granting of a variance. The property owner made a decision to build the house the way he did, but Mike Ness is not the one who built the house. Therefore, the law is very clear. One who purchases property in anticipation of procuring a variance to enable him to use it for a purpose forbidden at the time of the sale cannot complain of hardship ensuing from a denial of the desired variance. Each case, I've cited in my legal brief, the citations are there. I urge you, follow the law for the sake of equality throughout Santa Ana. This is an important issue. I am concerned what happens if law is not followed. Thank you very much.
Jeffrey. Ed with Tornell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Plan Commission, good evening. My name is Ed Tornell. My wife and I have lived in Santa Ana for the past 42 years. We raised our daughter here. I practiced law here for 35 years, initially as a prosecutor with the Orange County District Attorney's Office in the Trial Division and thereafter in private practice. My allotted time will be used to speak to you about the slippery slope the city will be on if it grants this proposed variance. Once the word gets around the city that a five-foot wall has been approved, it will become apparent to the property owners in Santa Ana that the law, Code Section 41-610, is not really the law. They will no longer retreat meekly when the city cites the ordinance. They will use the approval and its explanatory contents as a guide to pursue their own variances. It is our contention that the approval will engender a significant increase in wall, tall wall variance applications, and that over time, one, five years or more, it will strain the resources of the city to the point it will stop enforcing Code Section 41-610, and the walled fortress neighborhood will eventually come to pass. I also see an attorney or two advertising in the Register and a Floral Park Association monthly newsletter that they specialize in variance cases. If their client's application is denied by the zoning administrator, then assuredly they will take the case through the city's entire appeal process, and if that is denied again, they will file a lawsuit against the city as a last resort. Down the slippery slope we go. Now applicants will read the text of the approval and realize that they can now meet all four of their requirements of Code Section 41-638 necessary for approval. I don't have time to read the full text of each one of these requirements, but we'll headline them. Number one, special circumstances unique to the subject property. Number two, preservation enjoyment of substantial property rights. Number three, the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to surrounding property. And number four, that the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the general plan of the city. We believe that a Ness approval will make meeting these requirements much less difficult. Prior to 2004, there were approximately six homes in Floral Park--
Can we wrap up this?
I will wrap up this, thank you. But since Code Section 41-610 went into effect in 2004, I don't believe a wall higher than three feet has been built. Obviously, the ordinance has been very effective and should be tampered with. In summary, we believe that granting the Ness variance will dramatically increase the variance filings, forcing the city to expend precious time, resources, and taxpayer money better used on other more pressing issues. Over time, with many more, more tall walls being built, the fortress city we loathe will become a reality, and Floral Park, the shining city upon the hill, will be gone never to return. Don't let this happen.
Thank you, Ed.
Please accept the appeal.
Thank you. Angel Barnes.
I'm a recently retired judge of 10 years here in Santa Ana and the owner of a historic home on Victoria Drive in Floral Park for the last 17 years. I have an expansive front lawn, and beside it is my narrow nine-foot driveway with a heavy wooden gate that had to be manually opened. I requested that I get, that I be given a variance for a lighter wrought iron gate that could be opened electronically. My request was politely but categorically denied on the grounds that the gate is what the Mills Act requires. I had to stick with the wooden gate, and I accepted that. I incurred the cost of a much more expensive motor to open that gate, and I will incur the cost of replacing it more frequently than would be needed with a lighter gate. This year, my neighbors across the street at 2117 Victoria Drive, Dr. David Lang and Dr. Mary Jo Lang, who has asked me to speak on her behalf, have an expansive white Spanish villa, which is similar in scope to the subject property tonight. They also applied for permission for a five-foot wall on the grounds that their mentally disabled young adult daughter needed the boundaries for the yard so that when she took the dogs outside, they stayed within the confines of the property. Dr. Lang was told that she would have to apply for a variance, which would be denied on several grounds. The home is on the Historic Registry, and a five-foot wall is prohibited by the Mills Act, and it would pose a safety issue for the adjoining properties in exiting their driveways due to the obstruction of visibility. Compound that with the fact that one of her next-door neighbors, who happens to be the most prolific realtor in Floral Park, could demonstrate that the wall would reduce the property values of the adjoining two homes by up to $100,000. Accepting this feedback, the Langs withdrew their application--
Can you wrap up, Paige?
--and built a three-foot wall. Imagine their surprise on learning of this blatantly disparate treatment of this subject homeowner. I have more examples, but limited time to speak, so let me conclude by respectfully urging you to deny this variance, which flies in the face of the Mills Act, which will open this city, which I love, to untold litigation, including claims for possible indemnification for the additional expense homeowners have incurred--
Thank you.
--to meet the Historical Commission's dictates, and it will strip this commission of its credibility for all future dealings. I truly believe that. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Angel. Jean Andres.
My name is Eugene Andres. I live at 2467 Riverside Drive. I've lived there for 40 years. I've lived in Floral, I've lived in, I've lived on, in Floral Park for 46 years. I'm very interested in this particular issue, especially since I've spent so much time in Floral Park. We all know it's a special place. I think everybody that's spoken has talked about what a special place it is. And it's special for a lot of reasons. One is, is the wide yards in the front, the garages in the back. We, it's, if you, you really go back in time a little bit when you come to Floral Park, and that's the reason it's been very sought after by the entertainment business. They come down and shoot a lot of movies and TV shows here because they like the old feel to the place. One of the things, the Mills Act has been talked a lot about, but I'm not going to talk too much about it, but if you look at the state webpage about the Mills Act, they say local governments have adopted the Mills Act, Santa Ana has, and Mr. Ness has been the beneficiary of it, because they recognize the economic benefits of conserving resources and reinvestment, as well as the important role historic preservation can play in revitalizing old areas, creating cultural tourism. That's what Floral Park does for the last 25 years. We have a home tour, and it's been very successful. The last few years, we've had over 1,500 people come from all over Southern California to our home tour. They come here because Floral Park is a step back in time. It's the way it was 90, 80 years ago, and people like that. That's the reason people move to Floral Park. They like it. This wall, it's five feet high and 150 feet long, is against the Mills Act. It's not consistent with the neighborhood, and it basically says, stay out. Floral Park is very receptive to people. It's very social. I know I have at least 200 people come trick-or-treating to my house every Halloween, and we enjoy it. We're open. We want to encourage people to come and see Floral Park because it's such a wonderful place. And to approve, to approve this variance, I think flies in the face of the character of Floral Park for the benefit of one person, and I think it should be done on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Richard Wee.
Hi, my name is Richard Way, and I'm a resident of Floral Park. I've lived there for the last year. I am a licensed architect. I've been in the architectural profession for 25 years and been in the residential profession for over 35 years. And I've designed, probably had thousands of homes with my designs being sold on the open market, whether tracts or custom residential. It was brought to me about this one particular topic. I don't know the homeowner at all. I've never met them. But I was concerned about it because, as you've heard from some of the other people, if you allow it for one, you got to allow it for everybody. And one of the things that drew me to Floral Park was the various items, garages set back from the street, variety of architecture, front porches, the large setbacks off the front property lines. And I was realizing, when I was looking at this, with all the design guidelines that I usually have to design to or I have helped implement, they're basically, these design guidelines are emulating all the good qualities that Floral Park possess. And so if we start closing it off with walls, we're going to lose that. And so, looking at one of the rendering you had up there, I was trying to see, it was kind of hard to see if it had a lot of foliage on it or not, but this is a very iconic house on a very iconic corner. It would be aesthetically, I think, a mistake to close that iconic corner off. There's two homes right across from them, both for sale. What would say, make, let the new homeowners prevent them from wanting to do some walls too? And then that whole corner would be aesthetically unpleasing. So looking at, you know, I passed out an exhibit just to show opaque placeholder on what that could look like, and whether you dress that wall up or not, it kind of reminds me of a old line that Frank Lloyd Wright said where he was asked about mistakes, and he said, "Doctors can bury their mistakes, architects have to grow vines."
Thank you, Richard. Eric Stein.
My name's Eric Stein. I reside at 1816 North Flower Street. I can see Mr. Ness's home from my house. And I have a slightly different perspective on the building of this wall. Apologies to Mr. Duffy calling the project that's confounding, but from my perspective, as a brand expert, working with Fortune 10 companies for over 25 years, on their public persona, is better known as brand perception. So what is a brand? A brand is defined by a set of expectations that account for a reason why you choose one brand over another, or in my case, why I choose one neighborhood over another. It's why I chose to invest in Floral Park as a homeowner as opposed to Irvine, Laguna de Guelle, or Anaheim Hills. Boring. My expectation of the Floral Park brand values was exceeded before moving there. In fact, I read on the website, and I quote, "Recognized as one of Orange County's most established neighborhoods, our neighborhood is representative of a bygone era, one of gracious tree-shaded streets, abundant lawns and flowers, and unique and stylish homes, and most importantly, friendly neighbors." Before the board are a set of pictures that illustrate what walls do. These are wall of properties that I took photographs that were probably grandfathered before 2004, but they single-handedly destroy our unique selling point, which I just said. Gone are the views of abundant lawns and flowers. Gone are the unique and stylish homes, the views of those. And gone, most importantly, is the expectation of friendly neighborhoods and our sense of community. This is not an opinion, this is physics. Look at the pictures. Mr. Ness's actions say that all the rest of you can maintain your friendsless yards, showcase your lawns, your flower beds, and your friendliness, and that's fine for you, and I will reap the benefits of the beauty of Floral Park, the Floral Park brand. But I will not be accountable for breaking the social contract that the brand so clearly states on the website and has for many years. My personal agenda is more important. Share with me one final thought, that our country's really been never more divided. You look on your Facebook wall, and it's really kind of us against them, me against you. I think we need fewer walls, and I think we need more we. Fact, when a brand breaks its promise to its customers and potential to customers, it will surely lose its customers to other irresistible alternatives. Please do the right thing and protect our financial and emotional investment in Floral Park and our cherished brand in Santa Ana as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Ayman Garza.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ayman Garza. I'm a physician with St. Joseph's Medical Group, and I live at 1901 North Heliotrope Drive, which is directly in front of the proposed wall. We've lived in that home since 2000, and I remember clearly the day we bought it. I walked in the front door with the realtor, turned left, went into the living room, looked out the big picture window, saw this great expanse of grass, antique lamps, and revival-style homes. The corner that we're talking about is actually a very significant corner in Santa Ana. Allison Honer was the builder of all those homes, and that was his signature corner. So he built our home, which was an English Tudor. Mr. Ness's home is Italianate. Jugs and Bobby's home is Spanish Revival, and then the house across the street is Art Deco. So it's an extremely important corner. It's probably one of the more significant corners in Santa Ana. And I think of our time there, and our favorite memories were in the living room and actually out in the front yard. Our children played baseball together, and actually, one of my favorite memories was they were playing baseball, and a Santa Ana police car came up and actually used their loudspeaker to do a play-by-play of their game. This is typical of what happens in Floral Park, and that moment wouldn't happen if there was a wall there. For me, my enjoyment of this property will definitely suffer as a result of this wall. In October 2015, I got a preview of things to come. A green construction fence went up and did not come down until April 2017, despite no construction being done ostensibly on the outside. This fence was graffitied several times, as a stucco wall certainly will be graffitied. There are all sorts of stucco walls over Santa Ana. They are just basically canvases for graffiti artists. So really, what we're deciding today, this is a signature corner, we're really deciding what our city wants to be. Do we want to be a city like Bel Air, where we have stars, and we have big walls, and we have hedges, and you can't see any properties? Or do we want to be a city like Floral Park, which is very welcoming, very open? So are we a city of walls, or are we a city of neighbors and friends? And that's what you're deciding today.
Thank you, ma'am. Bobby Keenan.
Did you say Bobby Keenan?
I did.
Yes.
I didn't say it loud enough. Sorry.
I have a cold, so--
That's okay.
Hi, good evening. I really appreciate that chance to speak to you. I've been listening to what everybody said, and a lot of the points that are important to me and that I would have said to you have already been mentioned. But I am listening, I want to remind everybody that the issue here is the height of a wall. It is not how much work has been done inside the house that's relevant. And I also believe that if people really have a strong need for privacy, they should buy a property that has such privacy there so they don't have to ask the city to put up a wall around it. That's just my personal opinion. It also mystifies me why this was approved at all, because it is not a minor variance. A five-foot wall is a really big deal, and it's a really big deal around this crown jewel of a property. I live in Washington Square, and you might wonder why I'm so concerned about this particular issue and this particular property. Well-- Well, it's because if you grant this variance, you're gonna open up the possibility for other people to ask for five-foot walls. And we don't want five-foot walls in our neighborhood. We do not want things that will abort the view, the feel, the character, historical character of our neighborhood. And I've lived there for 25 years, and I've watched older and newer residents really trying to maintain their properties, improve their properties, enhance their properties, and create a beautiful neighborhood. And we do not want a neighborhood of walls. And if you allow this, then what's to stop anybody else from wanting to do the same thing? We don't want it in our neighborhood. We really value the charm and the feel and the character of Washington Square, and there are other neighborhoods in the city where people feel the same way. I urge you to vote against this variance and grant the appeal for this and all subsequent petitioners. And I want us to be faithful to the three-foot-wall height limit that is set by the city in its codes. There was a good reason to create that rule, and it serves the citizens and the look of San Ana neighborhoods as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Bobby. Debbie McKeon?
Good evening. I'm Debbie McKeon. I am a 27-year resident of San Ana. I too live in a landmark house. I live in historic French Park neighborhood. And our entire neighborhood is on the National Register of Historic Places. I have been on the Architecture Review Committee since its inception. And I can tell you, we have reviewed scores of applications for things to be done in the neighborhood to those Victorian homes. The good news for us is, because we are on the National Register, we have the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. That's our bible. There's really not a lot of wiggle room there. Now, we were up here last month with, we brought you something that the applicant wanted intervention, and you did rule in favor of the neighborhood. I can tell you, and my memory is a little weak sometimes, I only remember coming here three times, three times. One time, we did not prevail. And that was only after it went to the city council, and there was a lot of touching and odd things going on. So I'm just saying, the document works. Please let this fence ordinance work. Let it, follow it to the letter, push everything else aside, and simply do what you are supposed to do as it comes to the written ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Lisa, the next two are the Galvins, so I'm assuming that that's...
Mrs. Galvin already spoke, correct?
Mrs. Galvin only spoke. That's correct.
Mr. Galvin can speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. So at this point in time, Michael Galvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak. Pleasure to be here. I grew up at 1912 Heliotrope. Fifty, you know, 55 years ago, I spent my life there. And I just wanna be real quick. The first thing that just jumped out at me in this whole process was, and the zoning administrator, and I presented a three-page letter that was very clear and legible, and it was contained in the, the attorney sent to the thing, and it's on page 27 of your documents, but you can't read it. It was prepared by whoever's the attorney for Mr. Ness. The things I wanted to cover, hold on one second. First, the finding of facts that the zoning administrator came up with. They're not consistent with the actual facts, and I'm still perplexed. It says in, that the evidence indicates a property is sloped upwards towards the residence, resulting in residents sitting on higher elevation of the public right-of-way and surrounding residences. That is not true. If you measure the four houses on the corners, they all have, the house that Mr. Ness's house has a 12-to-13-foot elevate, 12-to-13-inch elevation. Mr. Ness said three feet. That's not correct. The planning administrator says two feet in his case. That is not correct. Get a tape measure and measure from the grade up to the balustrades where they sit. It's 13 inches. So, you know, there's no, there's no big grade difference here. Next is the, one of the, yeah, the historical, the balustrades will be not visible, and they're very significant. Next is, the wall is, they say it's decorative. They've only given us conceptual drawings. There is no plan for that wall, nor is there a landscape plan. And it was requested, we brought this up, and they never gave anything. It's just a conceptual. And I can't believe they're asking for approval of variance without giving the planning commission an actual wall plan to look at and landscaping. Third is the precedence for this. The zoning code was passed in 2000, or 2002, or 2004, and it's very clear, and it was brought up earlier when asked the staff, how many cases went before and how many were denied? 100% of the people who asked for a wall since the, since the 2002 were denied for five-foot walls, at least what I heard from the staff earlier today. So with that, I urge you to do what you guys do. You enforce the code unless there's the reasons, and it would be detrimental to everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Saramanti?
Hi, I'm Gina, and this is Sharon. We live, I live Kitty Corner from Mike, and Sharon lives across, by...
Well, across the street.
Across the street from me. So myself and my husband, along with our two children, have lived in the neighborhood for more than 20 years. And we've known Mike and Christine when they lived on Ross, as well as on Heliotrope. I'm confident that they will do a beautiful job and bring more value to their home, as well as the neighboring homes. We live Kitty Corner from the Ness's, and we view their house perfect from ours. And the proposed wall that they are asking for will only enhance their property, as well as the neighborhood. Due to the size of their property, I truly believe the five-foot wall would be an adequate size for the property. We completely support Mr. Ness and their plans for the new wall, and pray that the proposal will be approved.
We were thinking of the time, and so I, in agreement with Gina and all the other people, that hope you'll approve the variance. I just wanna say, I lived at 1904 North Greenlee, so I'm right on the corner. I can respect and understand the Ness's need for privacy. I also wanna say, when my husband and I bought our home, one of the reasons we bought it was because we didn't wanna live in a homeowners association with everyone's houses looking the same. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder. The Ness's have done a beautiful job of everything they've ever done in our neighborhood. Some people will hide behind the law, but what it really boils down to, folks, is they don't want a wall. I would still move into Floral Park if the Ness's have a wall. You ought to see the wall that's in front of my house. It's hideous that I look at, out of my big window. But it's the right height. It's within the law. No, we need to respect that these people are beautifying our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Schuler?
Good evening. Thank you. First of all, I'm here as a neighbor on Heliotrope, and as a resident of Floral Park for the past 12 years. I was initially drawn to the unique character of the homes, but quickly fell in love with the character of the people who live here. I'm not usually one to tell anyone what they can or cannot do with their own home. This is not personal, as I'm sure Mike and Christine are very nice people. This is simply about what's right versus what's wrong. The decision to grant a variance for a five-foot wall, first of all, seemed to be very short-sighted, as I did not see how you can grant this variance and then not allow anyone else in all of San Ana from building a wall higher than the city ordinance dictates, without asking for litigation against the city. After all, it was the city of San Ana that researched and created the ordinance for all residents. As a realtor in the area, the main reason I believe this is wrong is due to the negative impact this will have not only on the neighborhood, but most particularly to the Galvins, to the north of the property in question. The variance to allow a five-foot wall will forever change the desirability of their property, and as a result, their property values. All houses being equal, a home buyer is always going to purchase a house that is not completely boxed in with a limited view. The same would apply for all other neighboring homes that look at the walls. People move here for the friendliness and open feeling of the neighborhood. And it is my opinion that walls like the proposed wall will have a negative effect on the neighborhood and property values of those impacted. There are only two other homes in all Floral Park where a house is completely boxed in. One at 2429 Riverside, and one at 2345 North Park. Both were originally double lots, and the wrought iron fences still allowed sightlines for the neighbors to enjoy the view of the street. They were also built prior to any city ordinances, and were grandfathered in. The owners of 1904 North Heliotrope knew of the ordinance before buying the home in 2014. They knew the size of the backyard. They surely must understand the concerns of the neighbors. As I would tell anyone and any buyer, if a secure compound is a desire, then perhaps Floral Park would not be the best choice for them. I don't think the rights of a homeowner should ever supersede the right of a neighbor to have a sightline of the neighborhood for which they moved into the neighborhood. I think this is the wrong precedent to set. We should all have to abide by the same rules and regulations. I think this is the wrong approach to remain a unique culture of Floral Park. And I think this is the wrong approach to be a good neighbor. I was always taught that if you don't stand on principle, you stand for nothing. So it's my hope that the planning commission stands on principle and reverses the zoning administrator's decision to grant this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Mark Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Austin. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Rattan and Tucker. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ness. My law firm submitted a letter to the commission last week that has a number of photographs that support the application for the wall. I would like to go through them if I have time. There may not be time, but we have hard copies as well. It shows the layout of the proposed wall, and have a rendering of the wall. Thank you. This is the first one that we submitted. I think the picture is worth a thousand words. It responds directly to a lot of the quote-unquote criticisms that have been submitted here tonight, including those about the compound feel interfering with the openness. I believe somebody said the wall will block 2/3 of the house. Obviously, from this picture, you see that that is not the case. They balanced very much the, an approach that balanced Mr. Ness's property rights with an open feel of the neighborhood, something that's consistent with the architectural design of the home, and very much leaves the vast, vast majority of the home for viewing. And in fact, 100% of the home is viewable through the gate, which is wrought iron and open. Now, I've been practicing in this area of law for 17 years, and I have never seen as well-reasoned a report in support of a variance as that submitted by the zoning administrator. You can rest assured this is legal and well-supported in light of that report and the findings made therein. Now, you've heard a lot of speeches tonight about some people against the wall, some people in favor of it. But if there was one thing that Mr. Katz, the attorney, came up and spoke that I agreed with, it was that none of them were really talking about the elements of a variance. And that is the one thing he said that I did agree with. In terms of the elements of a variance, those are very much met here. Essentially, the key word or the key term is special circumstances. And there are a number of factors here that converge on this property that create special circumstances entitling him to a variance. Now, a lot of people come up and harp on this notion that, well, it's three feet. The code says three feet. We understand it says three feet. That's why he's asking for a variance. The law allows for exceptions where the elements of a variance are met. The first of those elements is, A, that he has to have substantial property rights that are interfered with. We have a little more time. We were promised a little more time by the, by staff.
I'm sorry, but, I'm sorry, but, you were promised by staff, but from the chair's point of view, I said three minutes. I've given everybody a little extra time, so you have a little extra time to finish up, but I said three minutes.
Absolutely.
And I want you to respect that like we respect you.
Absolutely. All of the factors here for a variance are met. There are special circumstances, the corner lot, by virtue of the fact that it's on a corner lot next to major thoroughfares, interferes with property rights, the fact that he has this enormous front yard by virtue of the 50-foot setbacks. All of these factors make this property unique, including its high elevation, which would make, frankly, as somebody said here tonight, a three-foot wall looks silly. As the picture shows, a five-foot wall would be perfectly in keeping with the elevation of the home.
Wrap it up.
And so, I would close by saying that the issue of a variance does not turn on matters of taste that you've heard here tonight. I wanted this, I wanted that. It turns on the elements of a variance, all of which are met here by virtue of the circum, special circumstances applicable to this property.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Sharon, industry? I'm sorry. Pardon? You already spoke. Okay, Sharon, thank you very much. Eric Sanderet?
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a 34-year resident of San Ana, and I live in Morrison Park. And one of the great joys that I have is walking down in the Floral Park neighborhood and enjoying the beautiful front yards. I have also, as an individual in the city, for 12 years, sponsored the Most Beautiful Yard Contest in San Ana. I am here to tell you, we're one of the few cities in San Ana that has a Most Beautiful Yard Contest. And it's been my experience in doing that that it is a tremendous team-building effort for neighborhood support and for neighborhood interest. I urge that you do not approve this wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Joni Barr? Take your time, Joni.
Thank you. My name is Joni Barr Samoji, and I've lived at 2012 North Heliotrope since 1974. And we highly urge you to approve and make an exception for this proposed wall. The design is simply beautiful. It can be equated to a gorgeous piece of artwork, and add to the enhancement of the corner of Heliotrope and 19th Street, and the entire Floral Park neighborhood. It is also to be an enhancement to this beautiful, gorgeous, historical home, as the design has been well researched by a highly respected and well-renowned designer. Because of the elevation of the home, this beautiful wall will not block the corner view of the Heliotrope and 19th Street. Another aspect, which is very important, 19th Street from Broadway to Flower has to be one of the most traveled, highly traveled streets in Floral Park. Owning property that faces 19th Street, we are aware of the tremendous negative impact that traffic on 19th Street has to the quality of life and privacy of its 19th Street residents. And my dear Lord, the Ness's home is at the very corner, which is all the more reason for this height limitation to be exempt. We also recommend you approve this appeal to reject the highly outdated fence limitation. It flies in the face of reasonableness and the best interest of the residents of Floral Park. For the past seven years, long seven years, we live next door to 2022 North Heliotrope.
Can we wrap up, Bobby?
Prior neighbor had in... Prior neighbor had installed a nine-permitted, non-permitted iron fence. In spite of numerous complaints from the city, did nothing about it. The new owner's first order of business was to remove it. We highly recommend your approval of this beautiful and historically correct fence, which will be an enhancement to our entire neighborhood.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Leslie Cato?
Hi. I live at 2119 North Heliotrope Drive for the past 20 years. The home in question, actually, my husband and I looked at it too prior to the paddocks purchasing it, and like the Ness's, we didn't have the funding necessary to truly renovate the home. But being friends with the paddocks and having looked at the home, I'm aware of the size of the backyard and the front yard. And my children would go down there and they'd be in the backyard all day long, either playing in the pool or running around. So there is enough room in the backyard. My backyard's a lot smaller, actually. And part of the reason why we did move here, my husband and I, is because of the openness and the family-friendly attitude, the community that has block parties, and everybody knows everybody. We could have moved to any other neighborhood in Irvine area, and we would have just been blocked out, and I did not want that for myself or my family. I do understand the need for privacy. Myself, we put up a hedge in our front yard mainly to keep dogs out and our children The variance, you have a wall here, we have an ordinance, and we have a variance, and we have people on either side, you know, vying for one or the other. Life's not fair, I know that. But I also saw two neighbors on my block, which is the same as Mr. Ness's block, have to make modifications. One that Joni just talked about, she was forced to cut down her hedge to three feet. Another neighbor further up was in the process of putting up their wall when they had to make modifications to keep it to under three feet. I think they were looking at four feet with theirs. And I just gotta shake my head at this and think, well, they're being made to follow the rule. Why is there such a special need being given for this particular home? I'd like to just maybe suggest a compromise. I mean, the Ness's have lived in the neighborhood before. They've had other homes in the neighborhood. They haven't been long-term in the neighborhood, so I question, maybe they'll stay here for a long, lengthy time, maybe not. But putting up a wall as they're proposing, if they were to leave, anybody future coming in would probably be not prone to wanting to take it down. So what I might propose is what we have done and which other people have done is put up a hedge. I'm wrapping up. You can put up a hedge. It'll probably cost a lot less to put up a mature hedge than a concrete wall, and then prior or other owners coming down the line, or even the Ness's themselves, can trim it back and be in ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Mr. Nobody.
Okay, I'm Mr. Nobody for reasons of privacy. I've listened to everyone here that's talked, okay? I came here when I was a child, as a baby. I will be 75 on Friday. My family lived on Victoria Drive. When they died suddenly, I moved to a relative on Heliotrope, to another relative on Flower, and to Fisher, what's now known as Fisher Park on River Lane. When I was a child and as I was growing up, there actually was a type of a wall that matched the ballast on the porch that is on their house that has cracks in it. I wrote about four or five notes. I forgot to leave my email address, which I never give out either, to Mr. Ness, and I left him on his front porch. I went back, I think it was a week ago Sunday, and I told him about this. I've told this to Ed as well. I've gone looking for the photographs from my mother. So they were first in DC at the townhome, then they were in Jupiter in Florida. They are somewhere in New York now that show what this wall was in 1938. According to my mother, there was a wall there, and it collapsed in the '38 earthquake that went through Santa Ana. Some of the buildings in downtown were destroyed. The other thing Ed mentioned about his house, well, at his house, the patio enclosure with the iron gate, I'm sorry, was not there when I was a child. That's been added. I talked to Mr. Ness. I said, what about putting, okay, he invited me into the house. It was heaven being back in there again. It didn't look exactly the same as I was a child growing up, but it looked fabulous. So I've watched this house for the years and years and years. For safety, it would not be good for me to move back into Floral Park. I live in East Side, and I have 10-foot trees in front of my property, down my property, in the back. I have laser beams, I have cameras, I'm highly protected there. And even with that, I still had two hate crimes. I was out of the country. He talked, I talked to him about, what if you put, okay, what if you opened it up in the center of the wall and put an opening and put little iron in the middle so people could see through? But it is not a problem on that corner, and it should be approved. Something was there. When the pictures come back from where they are in New York, you'll see that something was there. I believe it was probably around three feet, three and a half feet, considering the height that I was as a child that I remember. The gallivans I know have been there since '65. I returned in 1968 again, and I haven't left. I've lived in the city forever. So you should approve it because it doesn't distract from anything, and it doesn't distract from the original Mills Act, which is the house, period. How it is on the driveway, how it is in the front, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Catlin Mininger? Mininger? Sorry. Sorry.
Hi. My name is Catlin Mininger. I am the designer who's working with Mike and Christine. And my job, I work on a lot of historic homes by architects such as Green &amp; Green and Wallace Neff, and I've done projects for the Caltech, the historic Caltech campus in Pasadena. And the reason I was brought onto the project at the very beginning was to make sure that the house, their goal is to bring the house back to looking as period respectful and as much like it would have when it was built. And have gone, we've gone as far as having lights replicated from tiny photographs down the main hallway to having draperies that are copied from the original photographs. And when we've started talking about the wall, it was really with this idea of enhancing the Italianate look of the property and creating kind of a walled garden, a beautiful garden that I would hope would, you know, be something that the whole neighborhood could enjoy, both inside and out. We specifically chose a 1920s, an actual wrought iron gate that they purchased that was not super ornate, but allowed visibility through that main corridor, and chose to put the wall behind the big roundabout around the palm tree as a way of kind of inviting people to walk through there and to, you know, create something that looked like what would have been. I have never seen, obviously, this image that the last speaker spoke about with the wall, but there is an image that was submitted by someone that was shortly after the house was built in which there's no wall shown but tons of trees. And obviously, this plain, flat lawn is different from back then when most of the entire house was obscured by large trees, lots of foliage. So I don't think that that's really a valid point, just the preference for an open lawn. The setback, the curve allows a lot of visibility around the corner, and the materials, which are called out, somebody said there was not a plan. There is a plan from the construction foreman. There's a full plan that calls out all of the materials, the exact heights of every point of the wall, and so I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Catlin.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Joe Dunn.
Mr. Chairman, can I be anonymous as well, too?
You can be anonymous. Yeah, yeah. Joe, you can be anonymous.
Oh, there are many days I wish, Mr. Chairman, indeed. Good evening, Your Honors, Commissioners. I probably don't need any introduction, but I'm for Senator Joe Dunn, 1911 Heliotrope. And my wife and I, Diane is here, you all know Diane, the more popular one between the two of us. We've been at 1911 for almost 20 years now, and I want to take a slightly different direction in my comments. I've sat and listened to all the forwards and against and the various arguments, and I know that everybody comes to this podium in good faith. You have a very difficult task, as each of you know, in every issue that comes before a planning commission. It's why many of us have been in public service. The one thing we don't want to serve on is a planning commission because of decisions like this. So we certainly get that, and we thank you for your service as well, too. But it's forever a balance between the rights of an individual property holder, and this is the case, of course, Mike and Christine, and of course balancing it with the community interest as well. You know that. You don't need me telling you that, but this decision here is Exhibit A to that Balancing Act. I think for the most part, you know that I'm, Diane and I are one of the core neighbors, if I may use that phrase, that live directly across the street from the gallivans, who are, of course, right next door to Mike and Christine. And of course, Mike and Christine are directly across the street from the Garzas, who you already heard from them as well. The different perspective I want to offer is the following. When Mike and Christine first knocked on our door on a three-foot proposal, I was actually very supportive. I don't want any wall, but I get that we all have rights as property owners, so I expressed my support for that. And I know it's changed over time for many reasons, and there's been many discussions among the neighbors and Christine and Mike, and we are where we are with a five-foot proposal. But if you take a step back for a moment and take a note about, excuse me, what's occurring before you. We all came to Floral Park for a lot of reasons, but one of the most important is its community approach. We all want community. We don't fight with each other. We resolve issues for which we disagree on, even politics. It's the gallivans on one side of the street and the Democrats on the other side of the street. Even we resolve those issues. We resolve them as a community.
Can we wrap up, Joe?
I will, very quickly. But what you are seeing before you due to, in my view, a premature decision by the administrator, which is now being appealed before you, is a lack of allowing us to try to figure this out as neighbors. There's been so many discussions, and I know that Mike and Christine have made compromises, so have we in the neighborhood, particularly the gallivans, and a premature decision cut that short. And so you're seeing divisions now within our community in Floral Park that we all despise because it's contrary to who we are. And it's gotten to the point now where there are suspicions of political interference from council members, whether true or not, that's the perception. We have lawyers now hired, I get to say that, as a lawyer myself and many other lawyers. That's not helping the situation here at all. And I think we have enough divisions in our society today, cite the recent national politics, that my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is to either grant the appeal and put us back to a place where just us neighbors can talk, perhaps with professional guidance, not city staff, not a hired law firm. Many of us have the ability to bring an independent mediator, professional mediator, to the table, and let's solve this as a community. We got lawyers involved, we got a perception of politics involved, and we got divisions for the first time in our neighborhood, including by those who are most impacted. Let's not allow those divisions to get deeper and more lawyers hired and more trench warfare. We can resolve this. I know that Mike and Christine are coming in good faith, and so are the Garzas, so are the Duns, so are the gallivans. Can be done, but not if this matter continues to move forward on its current path. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. Does anyone else at this point in time want to speak? Hearing no one else that would like to speak at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Sherman, I have some questions. Can I ask questions for the staff?
Sure.
Okay. So in one of the reports, it states that the president of the Floral Park Neighborhood Association was contacted, and he didn't have any comments or concerns. And here in the report by Mr. Bureau, or Bureau, sorry, says that he was never contacted. Do we have the correct answer on that?
I have no reason to doubt a comment from the public, but I, yeah.
Ed?
Hello. I am the president of Floral Park, and they, both myself or anybody on the board or the secretary, nobody in Floral Park Association was notified or contacted.
Is that a yes or no?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I have a question about some of the comments that were made that building this large wall would maybe, would be a target for graffiti. Do we have any reports from the police department in regards to any graffiti removal, or do we have any research?
No, I have no information on that, but one of the concerns of staff and administrative was the wall graffiti, hence the condition of approval is added at the administrative's hearing was to include landscaping in front of that wall to avoid the graffiti, and that would include everything from ground covers to hedges to putting vines on the wall, anything and everything possible to minimize or eliminate the chance for graffiti. So that's actually a code requirement, not code.
Go ahead.
And I know in the past, before, we have voted on something. We have brought in members from a commission that is probably knowledgeable. In this case, it says Historic Resources Commission was not contacted. Were they not participants of this discussion, or do they not have to be?
Fences are clear in the zoning code. It's the purview of the Planning Commission, not the HRC. An issue of view corridor was brought up as a general discussion at a meeting of theirs back in April, but the fence belongs to this commission right here.
Thank you.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To clarify on the Historic Resources Commission action, there wasn't really an action, it was just more of a discussion, just kind of, what do you guys think of view corridors? There was no official action taken, so it was just merely a discussion at that commission. My question, though, for staff is, in Floral Park in general, how many variances have we seen granted for fence height?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, up to 2,000, there was zero. However, there was a report back for the, called the Floor House, back in 1984, that quoted five back from the '60s to the, the last one was back in, okay, so '67 was the first one, '81 was the last, '84 was the last one.
Wait, so, so Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Christie, when she was a Councilwoman, and her colleagues had adopted a code change to allow for fences to only go to a maximum of three feet in particular areas. So how would there have been a variance granted to something that was done in 1984? Right? Was it '84 or '86? Was it '84 or '86?
There was a height requirement of four feet back prior to 19, well, back to start in 1960, 1960, so they had to get an exception.
Okay, so at one point, you're getting exceptions to four-feet height. Now it was down to three feet.
That's correct.
And what was that, when was that ordinance adopted for three feet?
The, in June of 2000, the fence ordinance was revised.
2000, sorry.
That Historic Commissioner Christine mentioned, June 2000.
Any other questions, comments? I just want to state that in checking with the six properties that you referenced in the '80s that were granted the variance, only three have fences. Three do not have any walls whatsoever. So. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Ken?
This evening, I learned so much about Floral Park. I can see a lot of proud homeowners here this evening. I'm, I like the opinion, suggestion made by then-Senator Joe Dunn, that I think the issue, the height and all the differences, and you are very proud owners, homeowners in that Floral Park, you should be able to work together, work out the issues and discussion, maybe possible, make some, you know, compromises and so on, because being good neighbor, good community is very important to our city. In my opinion, the property does not demonstrate any, to qualify for certain, special circumstances which justify for a variant requested by the applicant. According to Municipal Code 41610, required that our wall and fences at residential channel is C3 feet, and also our San Diego zoning ordinance number NS2433 also limit the height of the front yard wall in residential zone to three feet. For that, I would like to motion to uphold the municipal code and then go to deny the variance and to approve the Appeal 2017-02.
We have a second.
Can you please repeat your...
Deny the variant and to approve the Appeal number 2017-02.
I'm going to second that motion, and I don't like to make comments.
Go ahead.
I'm just so unfortunate that we're here in front of this body, and I've been on the planning commission, this is my, my third stint at it. So I've dealt with some very decisive decisions in my history. But this one is probably the one that breaks my heart the most because I live in Washington Square, and things like this have also surfaced in our neighborhood. And it's, it's, you know, pitted neighbors against neighbors. And, you know, when you live in a place that you love, like I do, having to deal with something like this is just, to me, is just heartbreaking. I completely understand why, why the applicant wants the five-foot fence. I understand that. But I also have a obligation as sitting on this body to uphold our ordinances. They were written and approved by our elected officials, people that we went to the polls to vote for, for a reason. And, and the reason dates, dates back so many decades of really bad things that we allowed in the city. And when you look at some of the fences in the rest of the city, they're atrocious, and there's a reason why. I can't, I, the renditions are beautiful. I mean, it's a beautiful architecture. I think they spent a lot of money and put a lot of planning into it to, you know, to just, you know, make that property attractive. I have no doubt in my mind that it's a beautiful architecture, and it would be a beautiful property or addition property. But I can't consciously approve that because we have an ordinance, and we will be, I would be setting a precedent by allowing that to happen, and I just can't consciously do it. So I will be voting in, I guess, in favor of the appeal, and that is why I am second in motion. And I hope that, you know, moving forward, I'm not sure where the decision will go, but that this does not create barriers in the neighborhood and that, you know, that there is some win-win in the future, you know, however it ends up. I wish you all the best luck. And I do appreciate you all coming out tonight and speaking and spending your time, you know, here, expressing how you feel and whether you support or oppose the, the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Mr. Ness for all the investment he's brought into the city. I mean, the various homes that he's owned, and obviously the folks that have come out tonight to speak in support of his project. I mean, it speaks volumes of what you've done. So I, for that, I say thank you. But, you know, I lived in LA at one point, and I remember driving through Hancock Park and seeing all the fences and all the hedges that were just extraordinarily tall, that would hide the architecture that was behind those walls. Now, I know Mr. Ness is not proposing anything that comes close to those walls, but to what the folks who came out from Floral Park today to talk about the pride that they have in their community, how open it is, you know, people are walking down the sidewalk, the openness of the front yards, you know, there's something special about that. I had the opportunity this year, my wife and I served as docents on the Floral Park Home Tour, and, you know, the pride that beams out of folks that come into that neighborhood is just, it's amazing. And of course, the, the way it's laid out and everything just speaks for itself. My background's also in urban planning, and so as I'm hearing the testimony, I go back to, you know, what many of the lawyers in the room were talking about, which is applying the law. Here's what we have. So, you know, I appreciate former Senator Joe Dunn's comments about, well, what can we do? You know, could we bring this back to the community to hash this out and figure everything out? And I don't believe staff did a bad job, so despite what the concern was with staff or anywhere else this might go, the law does say that if folks aren't satisfied with this decision, it will go to city council. So that's what will happen at some point. But as far as talking about the law and how it applies to a variance, you know, we have to have four findings made in order to grant this variance. And at this point, I don't believe that those findings have been made. I do not believe, in fact, I think one person cited the, the idea that a variance has to have some sort of natural condition or hardship, and I believe they cited, excuse me, cited a case up in Sausalito. And that's true. You need to have some sort of natural condition. The house was built deliberately where it is on the lot, and many of folks have, well, not many folks, folks have owned that house in the past, have enjoyed the yard as it is. I know there's pictures floating around with some heavy vegetation in it, but for as long as I can remember, I, you know, that yard has been open. So with that being said, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, but I, too, will be supporting the motion in front of us tonight.
Cynthia?
Good evening, everybody. I also just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It makes me proud to serve up here because you all are the epitome of why we love our city. You know, we believe in it, we want to protect it, we work hard to build our own, you know, space in our communities. I lived on Ross Street while Mr. Ness was on the corner there, may not remember me, but for seven years. So I understand the openness and the special character. I counted one year, there was, I literally gave one piece of candy out to each kid that came through because I just could not believe it, and I counted 600 kids came through my door, and I stayed open till about 11 o'clock, and they kept coming. So I, I understand, and I also thank Mr. Ness for, you know, you can pick anywhere to go live, excuse me, and you've chosen our community, and for that, thank you. But I will also be supporting the ordinance because I believe that's the right thing to do as a commissioner. And I just want to say thank you again for spending your time here with us tonight.
Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna second what Commissioner Vermonaux said, and not sure if you all know, but we have a revision of the general plan and zoning going on now. And what's great about the city is that the community has a lot of input. So I thank the community for being here, but being on the General Plan Advisory Committee, I think, you know, we've learned that the community has a lot of input. And if we go back and reverse what they've worked so hard for, it would just be something that I don't think any city would want. So in feeling also hard, we have worked on that committee, and we continue to work as a community to finally revise this master plan that hasn't been revised since the '80s. So I'm not sure we're ready for a vote. I think you were going to speak, but I also want to vote with the community. I think a lot of you, more of you came to support the appeal, and I will be voting for that as well. Thank you.
I would just like to echo what has been said here, and that is that thank you for all of you for coming out and voicing your opinions one way or another. It's, it's something that I think we have to do, and it's, it was, I apologize if I pushed you a little bit to go through this, but, you know, we had many, many people that wanted to speak, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody had their time to speak. From my perspective, I look at this and just say that, you know, living in Floral Park, I came to Floral Park because it was unique. It was very unique. The architecture was unique, the neighbors were unique, everything about Floral Park is unique. There's 620 homes that are unique. And I think that when we look at certain things that came up in tonight's discussions, it, it kind of bothers me in some respect where we have, to me, the two homes that probably are the nicest in the neighborhood from the standpoint of what's, what we say is the street view and everything else, is Mike's home, and I also think the West home on, on Victoria is one of the most beautiful homes, too. And at this point in time, it's hard for me to understand why the West home was denied, and in the, in the case of Ness home, it was approved. So to me, there's some misapplication from that perspective that I believe is somewhat of an issue that we have to be aware of. And I think the second thing is, is that, you know, we are here for the city. We're not here for the neighborhood, we're here for all the neighborhoods. And from our standpoint, if we see something like this and we understand what goes on, and frankly, I think that we will be on a slippery slope where, in fact, over time, people will start to ask for the same kind of variance, and the ability to say no is going to be more difficult. And I think that's going to be a challenge that we have to look at. When we look at the walls that exist in San, in our neighborhood at this point in time, most of those walls were built 20, 30, 40 years ago, and they're all grandfathered. I think we've got enough, I don't think we need any more. I'd just like to, you know, see that we can maybe come up with a solution to this problem without having to go, as Joe Dunn pointed out, without having to go through all the lawyers and all the discussions. I mean, we had, sorry, Ratan Tucker produced 90 pages of documentation for us to review. I mean, that's a lot of information to go through, and, and, and good information in many respects, but, you know, if we could do something simpler, our neighborhood has been able to do things by working together. That's the key. We've always worked together. And I think that we need to continue to do that and maybe look for a solution and make sure that not just one individual or two individuals are taken care of, we have to look at it from the standpoint that the neighborhood is taken care of in a way that we all believe is the right, the right thing for everybody. Are there any comments at this point in time? Having said that, Madam Secretary, would you please read the motion?
Can I ask a question real fast? Did you have time to read all the letters that were sent in and the documentation that was provided for you since the deadline was 3:00? I just wondered, the meeting's starting at 5:30.
Did we have time to read all of the...
The letters that were sent in and the documentation that was on the website?
Some of us, some of us were able to, some of us not. Okay? I mean, really, I'll be honest, some of us did read some portions of it, some of us did not. And that's another thing that came up at the end. I mean, there were quite a few submissions at the very last minute. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, the recommended action is to affirm the zoning administrator's decision to approve Minor Exception Number 2017-01 and adopt a resolution denying Appeal Number 2017-02. That's the recommended action, but the recommendation from Commissioner Nguyen was to, to approve the Appeal Number 2017-02 and deny Minor Exception 2017-01.
Pardon?
We have a motion in second.
We have a motion in second. Okay, so the motion is to rule in favor of the appellate. All of us in favor? Aye. Opposed? Six to zero, with Eric Alderetti absent. I want to thank every... Yes, ma'am?
I'm owner of the West House.
Yes.
2017-42, and I, I sat here silently and listened to the discussion, and I did apply, but I also feel very strongly that we have to support ordinances that are in place. Once you give exceptions, it's downhill, and I'm not voting, or whatever.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that's the end of the business calendar. We will now move to staff comments.
Why don't we go with the Commissioner's comments first? Commissioner's comments first?
Staff comments?
Let's new Commissioner's comments first, since Vince is not right, ready.
Okay, that's fine. We'll start with...
Mark, Mark, ask them to leave so we can finish the meeting.
Can we, can we, if you're going to be exiting, could you exit so we can finish our, our commission meeting this evening? Thank you very much. Thank you. Can we move it, Mr. Nobody, can we move outside to the, could everybody please move outside if you are leaving? We would like to complete our session this evening. Thank you. Vince? None?
None, thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to Commissioners' comments. Mr. Nguyen? No. Beatrice?
I'm not sure who's going to attend the Planning Officials Forum. Is anybody else going to go besides me?
Cynthia and myself.
Okay.
Am I right?
So I will see you guys there, and then we'll share with the others what we learned. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia? Lynette?
Nope, no comments tonight.
Phil?
Just one. As far as the work-study session for the accessory dwelling unit, is that going to be scheduled for the next meeting or the following meeting?
Yes, I believe it's scheduled for the 13th, next meeting, yes.
Okay.
And then you'll, hopefully, the intent is to get the formal ordinance before you get the following meeting after that.
Okay, so, so there won't be any language available at the work-study session?
Yeah, we'll get you some out in advance. Absolutely.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, and as was mentioned earlier by Cynthia, we were asked if we would present on the 18th of October at the council meeting.
That's the 17th.
It's the 17th?
She said the 17th.
Missed that? Sorry, my bad.
No, she said the 17th, but I...
So I paid attention to her, but I didn't pay attention to the real date. Is that what I'm saying?
17th.
17th? So it's the 17th. We have five minutes before, I'd like to have anybody's input, and we could talk about that, but I'd like to see if we can get as many of the commissioners to be part of the presentation. So if we could mark that on your calendar. It's supposed to be at the front end of the discussion, so it will be something that will have probably around 6:00, 6:30. And all of us that can make it, let's hope that we can be there in force, all right? And if you have, what I'd like to do is to put together some topics of conversation... And if you have, what I'd like to do is to put together some topics of conversation. I'd like to have you submit some ideas of what you would like to talk about. One topic that I, I feel we need to look at is what Lynette was bringing up in some respects last meeting, and that is, things are getting smaller. Properties are getting smaller, buildings are getting smaller, things are getting smaller. And how, and how do we work with that situation? And how do we work with the state with regards to that situation? Because much of it is being dictated by the state. So that's one theme. And I think we need to talk about some of the issues that we have relative to people talking about the length of time it takes to get through the planning process and how that impacts the economic development of Santa Ana as well as everything else. And I'm welcome to any other comments and topics that we would like to cover.
Unfortunately, I will be out of the country during that time, but I would appreciate if you, a member of the Planning Commission, would relay my message to the city council that even though the state of California have allowed the less parking spaces for the former housing project, but the thing is the, our city, if they're continuing the trend, they're trying to be continuing, going that, that direction, and it would be cause a lot of inconveniences to residents and they were around those development. I seen a lot of development on the table with a very large, like 400, 500 unit housing in that one complex, but like maybe less than 250 parking spaces. Only that, and also causing inconvenience for the resident as well because they would not have a space for the parking of their own car. Somehow we can able to, of respected state law as well that to able to enforce our ordinances to able to make, make sure everybody, our city resident will have a comfort living.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. With that said, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I grab the last quarter?
What is that?
You know what, I'm not sure...